The purpose of this town hall meeting is to share information about coronavirus or COVID-19 specifically related to Clayton County and to answer questions. Today, we have non-panelists in three different categories that will be discussed. The categories are public health, education, legislation, and government. And throughout the next hour, we'll be switching out panelists as we go along. The first panel discussion will focus on public health. And with that, at this time, I'm going to have each one of our public health panelists introduce themselves.
Good afternoon. I'm Sudo Ready. I am the emergency services physician for Clayton County Fire and EMS.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Landry Murkison, and I serve as the Fire Chief, EMS Director, and Director of Emergency Management for Clayton County.
Good afternoon. My name is Olubango Obasanjo. I'm the interim Health Director for Clayton County Health Department.
Thank you so much for joining us today and taking time out of your busy schedule to be here to answer questions and to help keep our citizens and residents informed. So, one of the main questions that we address throughout the week and as we've been moving through this cycle of dealing with the coronavirus is how many residents in Clayton County actually has the coronavirus? And can you speak to the death toll to date?
Yeah, I will take that. So, and I'm looking at the data, the current data. As at 11:30, the data I have here has a total of 818 presumptive and positives. Eight hundred and eighteen. The official number, which I believe may still be on the state website, is about 650. The presumptives is because the state has started loading death certificates. So, folks who did not, who had tested positive while alive, but, you know, on autopsy, they turned up as COVID-19 positive. So, that's the cause of the discrepancy. Now, having said that, the deaths we have right now are 24. But again, once those, all those deaths from the death certificates are loaded on, I expect that number to go up. So, right now, the numbers I'm looking at is 818 with 24 deaths.
So, for persons who are asymptomatic for COVID-19, how can they or even healthy people or people who appear to be healthy get started or get tested to ensure they're ready to return to the public now that the state is currently being open and the shelter in place lifted?
So, if you're worried well or feel unwell or know someone who's unwell or you're worried about your family or your friends, please call a public health call center number. It's 678-479-2223. Again, I will repeat that. As you may know, CDC has broadened the criteria for illnesses that qualify for testing. So, right now, literally, anything from, you know, hangnail, almost like I joke, but, I mean, anything you feel, any feeling of unwell will get you tested. But you have to call us, and we'll screen you very, very quickly. And we can, if you call us early enough, before 2:00 p.m., we'll probably get you tested, swamped the same day. Chief, I believe you have a number. Do we use your number as well?
Right. So, the county is also in the process now of setting up a secondary specimen collection point site down at the Jim Huey Recreation Center. So, there will be more information coming out on that site here in the next couple of days. So, what we're currently working on now is getting our website up and functioning for people who can go on and register. So, like I said, as soon as that data is up and running, we'll be pushing that out through the county, which will further aid in assisting public health with increasing the amount of testing that we can do here in the county.
And right now, if you call us and where, if there's overflow, because we're working very closely with Chief Murkison, if you call us and you're closer to that, we will get you, we will get you tested, wherever you need to get tested.
Part of the question, I think, was if you're well, how are we going to reintroduce ourselves?
Correct.
So, to address that, to those who have been well and have been following stay-in-place orders as things start opening up, one of the first things is to determine if that's something you absolutely need to do, to leave the house. And once that's been decided for you and your family, excuse me, is to continue to practice the concepts of social distancing, mask-wearing, as well as personal hygiene. The rudimentary rules still apply. That is the idea of public health measures such as social distancing being considerate, respiratory hygiene, if you are not feeling well, what the advice was given by my panelists, but also to stay at home if you can. So, all those still apply and are extremely important as we start reconvening as a society.
Are there currently or soon to be any drive-through COVID-19 testing sites in Clayton County? Or where are the testing sites?
Our testing site, and I believe the EMA testing site, our drive-through. That's just, it's easy. In fact, before I came here for this meeting, I stopped by and actually witnessed a drive-through, people staying in their car, and they get swapped in their car. And the location, which I always struggle to give the location because we don't need people showing up there. It's better you call the number I gave you, and then we'll give you the location. Because if you show up there without having called ahead and being screened and getting, get a unique PUI number, you're wasting your time. But it's on Mount Zion Parkway. It's the old Choa Building. I forget the actual number of the address, if anybody can help me. But again, I repeat, do not show up there. Call the number I gave you. Let's screen you. Let's get you your PUI number, and then you should go.
And just to reiterate, I'll share that number again. That number is 678-479-2223. Please do not just show up. Please contact that number first, correct? So, what specifically are we doing to help citizens and residents be more alert about safety concerns specifically day-to-day?
So, one of the things that the county has done since our response to this pandemic started is we have continually in consultation with Dr. Ready, who serves as our emergency services physician and staff epidemiologist, along with Dr. Obasanjo and his staff at Public Health. We've continued to structure information collateral that we've sent out through multiple processes, multiple platforms, multiple media outlets, in an attempt to continually keep our public informed of the guidance as it changes. Because one of the things we've noticed since this pandemic started is the guidance continually changes as the virus morphs throughout the community, as different transmission rates are discovered through the testing process and just analysis, as Dr. Obasanjo alluded to earlier, now that that's being included in the autopsy phase as well. We want to make sure that our residents get the latest and most up-to-date current information about this virus and what they need to do to stay protected. So, all of the collateral that we have put out there is in a special location on the county's website. If you go to ClaytonCountyGA.gov and you click on the COVID-19 Response banner, there is more information there than you possibly would want to read in one sitting. There's multiple PDFs, multiple websites. There's multiple things that you can download and use, not only from the church community, but what to do with restaurants, small businesses, personal care homes, nursing homes. All of that stuff is loaded there. In addition to that, what we've also done is created several algorithms and several processes that are now in effect and in place to not only protect our workforce that is currently here working, but as we look to start reopening government and start to onboard our personnel back into the workplace, we want to make sure that there's processes in place to protect not only them, but our citizens as we welcome them back into our county facilities in a limited and very regimented way. We want to make sure that those facilities are clean and safe. And those processes that we've put in place in consultation with our team will help us ensure the utmost safety for our public and our employees.
So, what criteria are we using to determine when we will reopen?
So, kind of going back to the algorithms that we've put in place. So, one of the things that Dr. Ready constantly does, and I'll let her expound on this a little bit, is, so this is a constant consultation between myself, Dr. Ready, Dr. Obasanjo, Chairman Turner, and COO of Stanford, along with the Board of Commissioners. So, one of the things we got to do is we got to make sure that two facets are safe for us to start to reopen, and that's, A, our employee base that will be here functioning and serving the citizens, but then, B, to make sure those facilities are ready to receive those visitors and citizens as well. So, as we constantly research the guidance and we look at what the data is telling us, the ramped-up testing that we're trying to do here in the county, assessing how is this virus spreading throughout our citizens, and then what do we need to do to make sure our facilities are safe? So, all this is being done with Dr. Ready's input from the epidemiological side about what is this virus doing and how do we need to mitigate it, with Dr. Obasanjo and his staff telling us, hey, what is the curve doing? What are we starting to see? What is the spread? We take all of this, we run this through the processes that we've put in place with the Board of Commissioners, and that gives the Chairman what he needs from an information standpoint to be able to brief our board to ensure that we are doing this methodically, we're doing it safely, and that nobody, whether it's an employee or a citizen, becomes infected because of those actions. So, but I'll let Dr. Ready chime in on kind of the medical side of that process as well.
Thank you. So, one of the things that we are doing for our central employees, which we're trying to take and use that best practice and expand it into both the reconstitution of the government and also our recommendations for systems for the community, is looking at both surveillance, but how do we standardize communication? How do we get everyone involved from supervisors down? How do we get information? And how do we then use that information to make decisions on risk? Whether it's in terms of a room or a department, but also individuals and exposure. And that has driven us from looking at it much more from just a one-to-one to how does this infect an entire department? How does this infect essentially an entire building? So, all of this has been leading up to and is a stepwise implementation of how we're going to allow what we've learned and our best practices to then be able to be translated into services and into how our citizens are then benefited from knowing that someone, that we have done all of this and have done different methods to pretty much protect both our employees and our citizens.
So, are there pockets specifically in the county that the virus is more concentrated?
All right. So, that's data. That's me. To, I will pull up the numbers again, as at 11:30 today. Atlanta, 21. College Park, 13. Conley, 7. Ellenwood, 46. Fayetteville, 5. Forest Park, 58. Hampton, 56. Jonesboro, 244. Lake City, 13. Lovejoy, 1. McDonough, 1. Morrow, 51. Raven Gap, 1. Rex, 47. Riverdale, 224. Stockbridge, 15. Unknown, 15. So, I can leave, this is the, this adds up to 818. So, this is the 818. So, your two hotspots are Jonesboro and Riverdale.
Talking about asymptomatic, if someone is asymptomatic carrying COVID-19, is it possible or likely to transmit it to someone else in what would for others be the 14-day quarantine period? Or could it be longer or shorter period?
So, I will start, and I will have Dr. Obasanjo add on as. So, the information is based on thousands and thousands of cases. If you look at the, it's a bell curve essentially. And when you think about how you can make a decision on how to remain, you want to take the biggest chunk, which is the middle of that curve. And then, what the data is showing is, is that the 14 days manages to cover, I believe, 80 to 90%. So, the 14 days is on the top end of that curve. The curve continues, and there are cases of longer. But if you look at the 14 days, that covers the vast, vast majority of individuals, and this is from worldwide data, that are continuing to be virulent and are able to spread to others, but remain asymptomatic themselves. And so, given those numbers, that has been why the 14 days has been decided as that cutoff. And that is, again, specifically for those who are symptom-free, but positive.
So, as we get ready to transition to have our next panelist come forward in education and legislation, I'd like to ask for your closing remarks individually about what is most important for people to remember in reference to the public health category. Dr. Ready?
Thank you. I think as we move towards reopening and we move towards reconstituting both government as well as businesses and as our society, it is very important to remember that there are still responsibilities with that. And that is both yourself and your family and those to others to continue to practice what we consider good personal hygiene, hand washing, as well as social distancing and spacing and minimizing close contact as much as possible, wearing masks when able to. All of these are important metrics as we move forward because the truth of it is that we don't know how long this is going to be with us. And so, to always keep that in the back of your head and to be diligent.
And so, I'll take a second and kind of follow up on that with what Dr. Ready said. So, one of the best things that we can do as a public is stay educated on where we are in the response to this pandemic, and then stay informed as to what our local government is doing. As I said, we put a ton of information out on ClaytonCountyGA.gov, and as we begin to ramp up our testing efforts here in the county, we will continue that information flow and make sure that our citizens are staying well-informed. So, the biggest thing is, is take it upon yourself to go out, get the information, stay informed, and then take advantage of the opportunities that are put out there by this, by this board and by our community to help our community stay healthy.
So, the IHME model is what the President and most leaders have been using to inform their decision whether to open or close their communities. The IHME model, the original model, had us hitting our peak maybe later on this week, early next week. The model they have now says we hit a peak probably last week or even the week before. The reason that is, is because we did the right thing. We will continue to do well if we continue to do the right thing. So, everything Dr. Ready said, everything Chief Murkison said, please do it. Continue the hand hygiene, continue the social distancing, even with the opening up. And then, please have your mask on. We chose not to wear it because we want you to see our faces, but do not leave your home without your mask. And as we move on and as the next set of panelists come on, you'll see several people as they're looking, a very sparse audience, adequately socially distant audience. Everybody has their mask, most people have their mask on. But that's crucially important at this stage of the pandemic.
Thank you so much. So, that ends our public health section. So, if you will, if you'll please transition out while we have our education and legislation panel. Transition in. Just a few reminders in reference to where you can find the information. We have a coronavirus or COVID-19 information and education for the public on our ClaytonCountyGA.gov website. Please log on to that site. You'll see a red bar across the top, as well as all of our pages, that references that information specifically, where you can find up-to-date information about what's happening in Clayton County specifically and how we're operating currently for the government and administrative offices. In the meantime, I want to remind you of the number to call in reference to if you are experiencing some type of illness or feel that you may need to be tested. Please do not show up to any testing site specifically for Clayton County. You can call this number, 678-479-2223. So, we have our education and legislation panel, who is now positioned. And at this time, we'll start on this side and have the panelists actually introduce themselves at this time.
Hi, I'm Tim Hines, and I serve as President of Clayton State University.
Good afternoon. I am State Representative Rhonda Berno, Chair of the Clayton County Delegation.
Good afternoon. I'm Morcese Beasley, and I serve as the Superintendent of Clayton County Public Schools.
So, let's begin. Dr. Beasley, as Superintendent of Education for Clayton County, I'm sure you've been bombarded with questions, people wanting to know what's going to happen in reference to education. Can you speak to what exactly is happening in education as far as coronavirus and how you're addressing it?
Thank you. And I'd like to first say thank you for this opportunity, Commissioner Turner and Chairman Turner and all for inviting us to this platform. I think it's very important for the community to stay very informed. As many of you know, if you don't know, you should know, we closed schools on March 16th, and we went to a digital learning environment in our schools. Since that time, the governor has closed schools until the end of the school year. But we shall, we should, and we are continuing to participate in digital learning, which means basically that our teachers are working remotely with our students using our platform as Google Classroom. And if students have devices, they can connect to that instructional environment. If they don't, before we ended school on March 13th, I believe it was, that Friday, if parents did not have access to a device, they were able to get hard copies. And principals and others are working, even with parents now, to ensure that they have hard copies if they are having challenges with devices or the internet. If a parent or a guardian is not being successful with interacting with a teacher, I always tell people to always begin with the principal. Email your principal. And so, all of our parents should be familiar with Infinite Campus. That's the platform that we use to post grades, attendance, discipline, et cetera. And parents can always log into that platform and communicate with their children's teachers. So, there should not be a reason that anyone is not able to communicate with a principal and/or teacher at this time. As long as you have an email, or if you don't have an email, you have a cell phone, you can always call the school, leave a message if necessary. But I encourage everyone to the extent possible to take advantage of contacting the teacher first. If that's not successful, contacting the principal via email. You can always go under the Clayton County Public Schools app. Download it if you have not done so, and all of the employees are listed in the directory. And so, again, you can contact principals and teachers using that platform. We'll continue with digital learning until we end the school year. The last day for work for all students will be May 8th. Our seniors are already closing out. And teachers will work offline with parents and all to bring closure to the school year and order the post-grades on May 22nd. We're continuing with our Grab and Go, which is our effort, school nutrition effort, to provide breakfast and lunch to families that are interested and that express a need. We have 23 sites, and we have served close to 210,000 meals, probably over that by now as of last Friday, and then since we've been going this week, of course. So, we're very pleased. We partner with the Atlanta Community Food Bank to provide groceries and food to families at five of the 23 sites, and we've supported over 4,000 families as of the other week. And so, we know that that number will continue to increase. Once school is out, we will transition to our summer feeding program. We'll have 14 sites, but as everyone knows, many other locations, churches and all, may also have summer feeding sites as well. And so, we will, and we're encouraging others that normally do the summer feeding sites to continue to do those, host those sites throughout the summer. But we will continue to provide meals throughout the summer. Our goal is to start the school year in August using the calendar that everyone has already received. Elite Scholars will be following the same calendar with Board approval. On next week, they'll be following the same calendar in that we believe that the data may suggest that we may have periods of a surge once we get through this initial pandemic response. And so, we're preparing to ensure that we're ready for that in the new school year, which means that we may, and we will probably will, continue with digital learning. We may come back with digital learning. We may come back face-to-face. It just depends on what the data tells us and what the direction that the state and the county is going in relative to the pandemic data. But we want everyone to know that it's important that we pay attention to the data, that we do what we can, as the health officials have already shared, to minimize the spread of this data, because the data is going to dictate and determine when we can come back to school. We're planning for August. We'd love to see August, a return in August, but again, it's based upon the data and based upon the surge and based upon the hotspots, et cetera. What we will not allow is the schools to become the super-spreader locations, because you all know many hundreds of people gather at our schools when we're in session. And so, one thing that I'd like to add, our goal is to get all kids with a device in the fall. And so, we're taking to our Board of Education on May 4th a recommendation to accelerate our one-to-one initiative called Extending Learning Beyond the Classroom. And the goal is to lease or purchase devices for all of our students in the fall. And our goal, again, is to ensure that everyone is comfortable with not only face-to-face, but digital learning as well. All of our 3rd through 12th grade students will be issued a device, and all of our kindergarteners, 1st and 2nd grade students will receive a laptop to use during the school day, and then teachers will be able to issue that laptop once we go into digital learning. Our goal is to embed within our calendar digital learning days, realizing that depending on the pandemic, we may have to have more digital learning days than we'd like to have next year. So, that's where we are in the school system, and anyone can always email any principal teacher. You can email me if you need to, and stay connected. But always pay attention to your emails. Go to our website, www.clayton.k12.ga.us, and take full advantage of all the platforms that the information is posted on, even our social media platforms. Thank you.
I'll move to Dr. Hines now. We've talked about the BK through 12 education. What's happening at the college level and specifically for Clayton State University?
So, again, as the Superintendent indicated, we're incredibly appreciative of the opportunity to speak with the community. As the Superintendent suggested, there is so much more information that is available on our website, should you so choose. And ours is www.clayton.edu. And you will find an array of information there about our current programming. Clayton State's operations are in coordination with the University System of Georgia. The 26 institutions each have their own strategies for implementing general principles that come from the Board of Regents. But our governing board, the Board of Regents, establishes a broad framework within which we would be working. We're now in about our sixth week of complete online learning for this term. The Board of Regents has indicated that all summer courses that we offer will also be online. We have the benefit of having a history of a notebook university some 20 years ago. The result of that is that we've had an institution that was able to get to a fully online environment within a week, that support services were in place either through our Center for Excellence in Learning and Teaching, through our Hub Center, and our appeal for any technical help at help.clayton.edu to provide support for those who are attempting to access our online learning tools. The Desire to Learn or the D2L system is our general platform. All courses are supplemented by video and other file management systems through Microsoft's Office Suite, especially the especially the Teams function on the Office Suite. We're going to be through this semester in about two weeks. And it is our hope that students have taken full advantage of the help that has been provided to them. I know faculty have taken advantage of the help that's been provided to them to make this swift transition. The one comment I would make is that probably the least costly credit per credit hour fees for a very long period of time will be available this summer. The Board of Regents has waived all fees other than an institutional fee and technology fee. And we, of course, would strongly urge that if you have, if you're home and you want to take a course, to do so. We'll be starting in the fall. At least we're developing plans to have physical presence in the fall. But as Dr. Beasley indicated, it is the public health initiatives that will ultimately have final say as to what our instructional strategies will be come this August.
Graduations. So many people are concerned in reference to our seniors, whether it's seniors in high school or seniors at the college level. How is that being addressed in the K through 12 level first?
Thank you. The community has been informed that our graduation scheduled for May will be postponed till June. Our goal is to have a face-to-face event. But again, that is determined or will be predicated upon the pandemic status situation in our county and the state. But we're planning for a face-to-face event. That information has been communicated to our public. There are days in June, and I wish I had it in front of me, but I don't, to share, but I can pull it up in a second. While we're planning for face-to-face first, we're also preparing for a virtual graduation second in the event that we cannot do the face-to-face graduation as much as we'd like to. So we survey our community, our students, our parents, and they prefer face-to-face. We all do. However, they understand that if face-to-face is not possible, their second option was a virtual graduation. And so we're working right now, schools are working, principals and staff members are working with our seniors to create that virtual graduation experience. But again, face-to-face is our preference, number one, but then we'll go to virtual if we see that the face-to-face is just not doable because of this pandemic.
We will, we also surveyed our graduating students. They clearly preferred a physical presence, even though May 9th, which was the original schedule for our commencement, is not going to be available. We will be hosting a variety of virtual events on May 9th in which students and their families will be able to access both some ceremonial presentations from a number of us as well as congratulatory notes from faculty and staff on the accomplishments of our graduates. We indicated that we will in fact have a replacement ceremony sometime in the fall, also pending inability to guarantee safety during those ceremonies.
Thank you.
May I, may I add that the graduation dates are June 25th, June 26th, that's a Thursday and Friday, and we'll be using the three stadiums, Tera Stadium, 12 Oaks Stadium, and Southern Crescent. And we've also shared some tentative rain dates in the event that it rains. But we have, and I'll just go very quickly if I may. Lovejoy High School on June 25th at 9:00 a.m. at Tera Stadium. Monday's Meal High School at 8:00 p.m., June 25th at Tera Stadium. Marl High School at 9:00 a.m. on June 26th at Tera Stadium. Forest Park High School at 8:00 p.m. at Tera Stadium as well. For 12 Oaks Stadium, Thursday, June 25th, we have Jonesboro High School at 9:00 a.m. Mountain Zion High School at 8:00 p.m. on Friday, June 26th. Elite Scholars Academy at 9:00 a.m. Stillwell School of the Arts at 8:00 p.m. And then at Southern Crescent Stadium, on Thursday, June 25th, at 9:00 a.m., we have Charles Drew High School. At 8:00 p.m., we have North Clayton High School. On Friday, June 26th, at 9:00 a.m., we have Riverdale High School. And at 8:00 p.m., we have Perry Career Academy. And again, tentative rain dates, but this information is posted again on our website at www.clayton.k12.ga.us.
Thank you, Dr. Beasley. We have Representative Rhonda Berno for District 77 here. Can you share with us how the state legislatures are handling or managing this pandemic?
Thank you, and good afternoon, Clayton County. Thank you, Chairman Turner, for allowing me to be a part of this virtual town hall today. Currently, as you know, the Speaker Ralston suspended our session in March. And so during this time, the local delegation has had one virtual town hall to answer any questions that the community has had. And we are working individually and collectively to make sure that Clayton County residents are informed of anything that happens on the state level and assisting with unemployment claims and any other issues that they have with the Health Department to make sure that everybody has current information. Also, the one thing that we all know is that COVID-19 will have a financial impact on all of Georgia because of loss of revenue due to high unemployment, lack of revenue due to our shelter impacts. And so our session, the Speaker has sent us a letter saying that our session will resume on June 11th. This date was selected to enable the members of the General Assembly to have the most current data available on the revenue and expenses as we make significant changes to the FY '21 budget. Our priority when session resumes will be the only thing we are required to do and pass, a balanced budget. So a state budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. We will not have the April revenue numbers until the end of May, so that's why we're waiting to go in in June. The state could face at least a $4 million shortfall over the next 15 months without more federal aid, likely meaning layoffs and furloughs across the government in the coming year. So for fiscal 2021, we'll begin July 1st, and the shortfall could top 10% to 20% of the current state spending, which goes for everything from teacher salaries to prisons to healthcare to road buildings and other programs. So your delegation will be working with other legislators to make sure our communities are not severely affected. We'll be working with our federal counterparts to ensure that an aid package is deployed to help Georgia avoid state-driven layoffs, furloughs, or deep cuts to essential programs like education, human services, and Medicaid, and so that Georgia families are not negatively affected for the next decade. And that is also why it's important for everyone to complete the census application because it will have a direct impact on future funding for our county.
Speaking of the budget, specifically for the college level and for K through 12, can you address what effect COVID-19 has had or will have on the 2021 budget?
Yes, we can. Right now, of course, we're incurring expenses as we do the Grab and Go. We're paying people to actually do that. So we're incurring expenses right now. We don't know that, we don't know specifically, because Representative Berno has already shared, we don't know the extent of how this will impact the state's budget for next year, fiscal year '21, but we are planning for austerity cuts or reductions, which basically means that we'll have a potential loss of revenue. So we're fortunate right now that we're planning to navigate that with a high fund balance, a strong fund balance in Clayton County Public Schools. But we are going to be very smart, and so we're not necessarily projecting an increase in revenue. Right now, we're probably beyond our devices that we're going to recommend to the Board of Education. We're going to minimize expenses because we want to make it through next year in a very helpful, healthy way, if you will. And we'd like to minimize loss of staff, loss of resources, et cetera, for our students. But we acknowledge that there may be some trying times ahead, and we're prepared to make those decisions when those decisions have to be made. But right now, we're collecting the information and preparing ourselves with all the various options so we can make that recommendation to our Board of Education, which will be ultimately responsible for approving or not approving whatever recommendation we bring to them.
About 42% of our budget is dependent on state revenues. The remainder from a variety of fees and tuition and grants that we receive from a variety of agencies. There's no question that we will be facing a reduction in revenues from the state. Enrollments are still unclear, as the nature, of course, delivery will be unclear, not only for the summer, but for the fall. At least at the present time, our enrollment projections right now are ahead of last fall for the coming fall. But again, it is, it's quite, it's really quite too early to tell. We are, and I think all of us here, are prudent managers of the taxpayers' resources and for us, the students and their families' resources. And so we are all bound to find ways in which we will provide the best possible services that we can under whatever revenue circumstances we find ourselves in on July 1st.
So let's gather and have our closing remarks from the education and legislative panel. What do you want people to remember? What's most important for your residents and citizens to remember specifically?
I would simply say that some 20 years ago, Zell Miller did some very unpopular things of redirecting dollars from other parts of state government to education because he firmly believed that investments in education, even during tough times, were at the heart of the future of the state of Georgia. I believe that belief 20 years ago evidences itself still today. And it's my, I have great faith in the wisdom of the state of Georgia and quite frankly, the wisdom of the citizens of Georgia to invest their own investments in education that will benefit the state now and in the future.
I also serve on higher education, so I have a few updates also. We have, Atlanta Techno College has a campus in Clayton County, and they are still serving their students virtually. And they have many programs available that a student or someone interested in personal and professional development can complete 100% online. And they are also having a virtual open house with free applications, April 27th through May 2nd. And so you can go to their websites to find out that information. And additionally, we've also sent a letter to Mayor Bottoms asking that Clayton County receive a portion of the airport funds that were sent from the federal government. We, as your delegation, will be looking at all avenues to make sure that Clayton County does not suffer because of the budget cuts. And the one thing we will ask our residents is when we go back in session, is that you pay very close attention to the budget, and if there's anything that you're not sure about or anything that you see that we need to fight for has an impact on our community, that you will let your representative know. And then also, we're hosting a virtual town hall this Saturday, May 2nd. Representatives Bazemore, Schofield, Scott, Stovall, and myself on the health disparities for minorities as a result of COVID-19. Thank you.
Well, I would just like to share, I want to encourage our seniors who are graduating this year to really consider applying to go to college and to really work on their post-secondary plans. This is the time to, I think, to go to college, this is the time to get post-secondary training. So I want to encourage all of them to have a plan and to follow through with their plans. I'd like to encourage our families at large to stay safe and to pay attention to the professionals, our health professionals, the doctors, and our emergency management agencies, fire department, et cetera, the government. It's time to listen because we're making data-informed decisions. It's time to make good decisions as well. And so I encourage our families to make good decisions, not about today, but about tomorrow. And lastly, we're preparing as we close this school year, we're preparing for the next school year. There will be life after this pandemic, and we will have school, one way or the other. And so I want everyone to get ready, to be excited, and to always know that our school system is there to ensure that our students get the quality education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us today and for all of that helpful information. So now we're going to transition out the panelists that are there for the government panel that's coming up. And in the meantime, I want to encourage everyone to continue to go to our Clayton County website, claytoncounty.ga.gov, for updated information about coronavirus and how it is impacting or affecting our residents and citizens and community throughout Clayton County. We are recording this session here currently, so you will be able to watch it playback on our CCTV Channel 23 through Comcast and of course, AT&amp;T Channel 99, U-verse. As a reminder, and to emphasize what our education and legislative panelist has just shared with us, we want to remind you that you can go to the clayton.k12.ga.us website for any information concerning your students, as parents, or if you're representing as a student. And also for Clayton State University, you can access www.clayton.edu. And a reminder also of a virtual town hall meeting that's coming up on Saturday, May 2nd, specifically referencing African-Americans, minorities, and COVID-19 health disparities forum, a conversation with medical experts on May 2nd at 10:00 a.m. And that information will have in our frequently asked questions also where our legislatures will be addressing questions and concerns from the community. So at this time, we're moving forward with our government panel, and I will start over here and have each one of the government panelists introduce themselves.
Shawna Dozier, Elections Director for Clayton County Board of Elections and Voter Registration.
Jeffrey Turner, Chairman of Clayton County Board of Commissioners.
Jeffrey Parker, General Manager and CEO of Marta.
Thank you so much for joining us as we wrap up our final panelists for the town hall meeting. What is the timeline for County Board to approve transitioning back to normal while maintaining social distancing and keeping up with tests for Clayton County?
Well, let me say this, and some of the other panelists have already covered it, but this situation is very fluid. We initially had a target date of May 4th. That date, as you can tell, has came and gone, and the employees are still not back to work. So we looked at the numbers, we looked at the safety precautions that we have to put in place. We also looked at the PP&amp;E for each employee and the availability of it. And we were not in a place comfortably for us to come back on May 4th. So we moved, extended that date. It's just a target date of May 11th. So that's our next target date. Whether or not that's going to come to fruition will be, excuse me, will be greatly contingent upon all of those factors coming together. The PP&amp;E, each facility in Clayton County being thoroughly cleaned, making sure that our employees have what they need to come back and to be safe as they conduct their jobs. Not only our employees, but the safety of our citizens is paramount to us as well. So we want to bring employees back, but we've got to do it in a way that they are going to feel comfortable, that they are going to be safe, and that we are being responsible for conducting the business of the county.
So Chairman Turner, due to Governor Kemp allowing businesses to open back up on April 24th, I believe, what's the plan on reopening businesses specifically in Clayton County? And should they open back up, or should businesses remain closed?
Well, Governor Kemp, through an executive order, established guidelines for certain businesses to be open. Now, if you ask me, do I agree with those businesses that he allowed to be open, the answer to that is no personally. I don't feel like those businesses could or should be open simply because they cannot really control the adequate social distancing that the federal government as well as the state has outlined. But at the same time, you've got to recognize the fact that he is the governor, he has a right to establish an executive order to- to start, to open back up our economy. So although I don't have the authority, and let me say that again, I do not have the authority to supersede the governor's order, but what I can say is unless you are an essential business, conducting essential, essential business in Clayton County, it would be my preference that you not open. That you wait a couple more weeks. We have more testing sites, as our health panel discussed it, to be able to test more of our citizens, more of our public safety officials, as well as making sure that those numbers are accurate, excuse me, and, and true in terms of what we're seeing. Some of the stats and numbers that we're getting are redundant, so we got to make sure there's a proper vetting of that. But we also got to make sure that we test as many, the, the secret in this is testing. The more people we can test, the better off we will be as a community. So as we see those numbers come in, we want to encourage businesses, if you don't have to be open, don't open.
How is the county handling elections?
Yes, the Secretary of State has postponed the election, the general primary election as well as the presidential preference primary election until June ninth. The Secretary of State decided to mail out absentee ballot applications to all active voters in the state. In Clayton County, a hundred and eighty-three thousand applications were mailed. Out of those applications that were mailed, we have received twenty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-two back into our office, and we have processed fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty-nine of those applications so far. As of April twenty-first, the Secretary of State started mailing out those ballots and we have started to receive those ballots back into our office. We are still on schedule to conduct advanced voting, starting on May eighteenth, as well as conduct elections on Election Day for June ninth. Typically, on average, we receive roughly eleven hundred absentee ballot requests per election, and we are already up to twenty-four thousand right now.
So where can residents or voters find the sample ballot?
Yes, so right now, we have on our website, which is www.claytonelections.com. We have a link on our website where a voter can go directly to the My Voter page. We also include the instructions on that, on our website, where voters can go to the My Voter page and provide the instructions where you can go onto the My Voter page, put in your first initials, last name, date of birth, and the county in which you reside, and it will customize your sample ballot directly to you, the voter. So we're very excited about being able to have voters go to the website and pull up their customized sample ballot. In addition to the sample ballot from the My Voter page, you can download your precinct card, you can pull up your elected officials, as well as your district information.
Can you also address early voting and people who did not have a chance or an opportunity to actually vote in the early voting process? What will happen?
Yes, so those that did not participate during the presidential preference primary for advanced voting or absentee by mail as of March fifteenth, you still have an opportunity to vote in the presidential preference primary as well as the general primary. So what you will receive is a combined ballot. On that combined ballot, you will have the presidential preference primary as well as the general primary. Now, if you did participate during the presidential preference primary as scheduled for March twenty-four, during early voting or absentee by mail, you will only receive a general primary ballot.
Thank you so much. So let's talk about MARTA and how MARTA is specifically handling the pandemic specifically in Clayton County.
Yeah, so first I'd like to really thank Chairman Turner, who's safely six feet from my left, for inviting me here. I really am glad that I'm here to talk about what, what we're doing. As General Manager of MARTA, I take it very seriously how we serve our constituents, the riders. And, and here we're, we're to talk about how we're providing service to our citizens of Clayton County and, and keeping up with the commitments that we've made to this, this body, the, the county commission as well as the county with the projects that, that we need to deliver. You know, I want to honor the thousands of, of men and women at MARTA who have been on the front line providing service over, you know, over these, these many weeks, making sure that our customers are safe and that their fellow, themselves and their fellow employees are safe. We take so seriously the safety of our customers and of our, and our employees. And we do that by really focusing on and fully understanding and vetting internally all of the recommendations of the, of the CDC. We've done a lot of things over the past number of weeks to, to make sure that we're providing safe service. And one of the things that we've had to do is we've had to curtail and run only the, the essential bus service that we can provide capacity. One of the things that, that social distancing has forced us to do, and I'm going to hold up a little sign, and unfortunately, the, the green screen behind me won't allow you to see it. But we've marked seats on our buses to make sure that we have safe separation of social distancing between our customers. So that means a, a bus that used to carry forty-five people during rush hour can only carry about fifteen. And we quite simply don't have the, the, the enough buses and enough operators to provide all of the service. So we've looked very carefully at our routes, found our busiest routes and routes that serve some of the most essential businesses in, in the region, and doubled down on the bus service. So a bus route that normally has eight buses out there, we're running sixteen buses so that we can provide that level of service. The buses, the bus routes that, that we deemed as essential routes, the one ninety-one, the one ninety-two, the one ninety-three, the one ninety-six, and, and the eighty-nine are carrying a, a lot of passengers going to their essential work, job, work activities. And we continue to monitor that ridership as the governor, as Chairman Turner had mentioned and spoken about, the reopening of, of the state is going to have an increase in the number of riders. And we need to make sure that we can continue to provide safe and sustainable service. On our rail system, we have seen a, a, over the weekend, a small increase in ridership. We're going to continue to monitor that to make sure that also there is social distancing in the rail stations as well as on the trains.
Mr. Parker, can you share the website of where citizens or residents can get information specifically about MARTA?
Yeah, we have a, we have a great website. It's www.it'smart, I-T-S-M-A-R-T-A dot com, it'smart.com. And we have all the information about the bus routes that, that we're providing. The other thing that we do is we post daily a summary of our ridership so people can see how our ridership has changed. We're running about, carrying about seventy percent of the people who normally ride the system on our bus system as normally carried on our bus system. And on the rail system, we're only carrying about thirty percent. So the bus system continues to be heavily used in the region and, and, and we need to continue to monitor that. The other dashboards we have, for example, on there, we want to be very transparent about how the virus is affecting our employees. So we have information about how many employees have been tested positive, how many employees we've had to send home to quarantine over a fourteen-day period to make sure that our, the fellow employees as well as our customers are safe.
Thank you so much. The next two questions are for Chairman Turner. Chairman Turner, is there an order in place for an emergency eviction for tenants that are working and taking advantage of no eviction by not paying rent, or is there a plan to help?
Yes, and that was actually covered last town hall meeting through our judicial panel where magistrate court judge Wanda Dallas specifically issued an order that stopped all evictions at this time during the state of the emergency. So that's essentially what it is. There is no evictions during the state of emergency. So therefore, anybody who is getting evicted or threatening to be evicted, you should go to the magistrate court judge's website, and that order, I believe, is posted on her website.
And Chairman Turner, can you speak to the CARES Act? You know, did Clayton County receive funds from the CARES Act?
Absolutely. We did receive through a, a revised rendition of the CARES Act. We did, we're able to receive some monies. And to see if you are eligible and it's for nonprofit and for-profit businesses in the community that has been impacted by the coronavirus. To see if you are eligible for any of those monies, you should go to the website of community development because it is a community development block grant. And they should out, that, on the website, it outlines the eligibility criteria for you to find out whether or not you're eligible.
This question is for Ms. Dozier. Ms. Dozier, can citizens still register to vote?
Yes, the voter registration deadline for the general primary and the presidential preference primary is May eleventh. We encourage you all to go on the website, and you can register to vote online as well as still send us an application via mail.
Thank you so much for answering that question. So as we get ready to wrap up our town hall meeting, I want to have each of you offer your closing remarks. We'll start here with Mr. Parker.
Yeah, you know, before I completely close, I do want to mention that, that MARTA has a lot of active projects here in Clayton County. And although we clearly have, you know, impacts financially, impacts with our employees, we are, we are forging ahead and focused on delivering these projects. We continue to install shelters here in the county. We've installed twenty-one so far in FY twenty-twenty. The, the commitment that we made with the fifteenth amendment around some of the key initiatives, including the Justice Center, is on track. We're beginning final design of that. Phase one on May first and, and are going into construction soon after that. And by the middle of June, should have that facility open, which will be a wonderful thing. And then phase two is on track with a more permanent structure out in twenty-twenty-two. We continue to work on the, the multipurpose operations and maintenance facility, which is substantially larger than it was when, when Clayton County first joined. And then we continue to have hearings and, and meetings around land use, around the high-capacity corridors that, that we're planning. So in closing, you know, we do face financial challenges, as, as the chairman mentioned. The CARES Act, we too, received some money through the, through the FTA to support and stabilize transit. And, you know, while that will help substantially, the sales tax and, and the fair revenue that we are going to collect over a number of years is going to be, you know, substantially less than what we were anticipating. And we will deal with those realities as, as we better understand our financial constraints. The one thing I do want to say is that as the, as the region stands back up and more and more, more and more people are out there, it is so critical that, that we maintain social distancing on our transit system and throughout all of the work that, that we're doing, whether it's getting to a transit station or riding a transit system, it is going to be key to, to making sure that, that we flatten this curve and keep people safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Ms. Dozier?
Yes, just a couple of reminders. The voter registration deadline is May eleventh for the general primary and the presidential preference primary that's going to be held on June ninth. We also want to remind voters that the deadline to apply for or request an absentee ballot by mail is June, June fifth. However, if you request an absentee ballot on June fifth, you have to return the ballot back to us by Election Day. So we strongly encourage if you are interested in voting by mail to do not wait until the last minute to make your request so we can make sure we have ample time to get you your ballot and you can return it back to us on Election Day. Also, we did find out through the Secretary of State's vendor that has been mailing out the ballots that the voters have been receiving a privacy sleeve versus an absentee ballot envelope. Go ahead and put that ballot into the privacy sleeve. And go ahead and send it back in the, out of envelope back to us instead of, because the state has provided us context that they are not going to send out envelopes for those, to make those changes. We are going to update some instructions and provide, provide those on our website as well. Also, just continue to check our website as we're receiving updates. Will, will we post the information on our website at www.claytonelections.com? And also, due to COVID-nineteen, we want to encourage you to just stay safe, stay well, and just vote by mail.
Ms. Dozier, if you will, address this in your closing remarks too. What exactly is being done or what precautions are being taken to protect the poll workers?
Yes, so we have been ordering PPE for our, our poll workers. They will be wearing masks. They will be provided with gloves. In addition, we are using sneeze guards, privacy screens as well during early voting as well as on Election Day. These are operations that we are working on right now to secure all the PPE that we have, we need. So far, we've secured about fifty percent as of today's date. So we are prepared to provide PPE for all of our advanced voting staff. In addition to that, the advanced voting staff as well as poll workers will be receiving additional training on how to ensure that they stay safe and maintain those social distancing, all of those things to ensure that everyone stays safe.
Thank you so much. And of course, last but certainly not least, Chairman Turner.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thanks to our moderator for doing such a great job, but also to our panelists who took time out of their very busy schedule to come here today to answer some questions from our community in reference to how we are handling this current pandemic. I think every last one of them did a great job and I appreciate them being here. Now, when it comes to our community, when it comes to a shelter-in-place order, my ask of our community is don't let whether a shelter-in-place ordinance or order affect the way you operate. You need to know that whatever you're doing to keep yourself safe, I would encourage you to continue that. Order or not, if you are a vulnerable population, if you have health issues, stay at home. If you have essential business you have to conduct, then do it in a safe, responsible way. Wear a mask, wash your hands, you know, you have to exercise proper hygiene. Social distancing, make sure that you separate yourself from others. It's not hard and it's not rocket science. We know that we have to exercise those recommendations from the CDC to make sure that our community is protected, that we are safe, that we are acting responsible. Because whether you are in a healthy class or somebody who's at risk, when you go back home, you might be bringing it back home to a loved one. You might be bringing it back home to grandparents. You might be bringing it back home to somebody who has a health condition that did not sign up for it. But you're bringing them the possibility of this virus that could cause them long-term illness or even death. So again, do I agree with a lot of the businesses that are open? No, I don't. But if you are going to be open, be responsible. Take responsibility for your employees. Take responsibility for those who might patronage your business. You owe that to them. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that our community is healthy, our community is able to rebound. There are some businesses, businesses that may be severely impacted. That is why the federal government, as well as the state and your local government, is trying to provide a grant fund or funding that could help your business to sustain itself. But I encourage you, go to the websites, go to claytoncountyga.gov, go to the community development, go to the Development Authority website. Make sure you research all of the resources that we have available to you in our community. We truly want to help. We're going to help. But you have to take some responsibility upon yourself. Government can't do it all. We can legislate, but unless you are willing to do what is in your best interest to keep you and your family safe, then there's nothing more that we can do. Take care of yourself. Take care of yourself. Exercise those guidelines. Know that we have your best interests at heart. And lastly, stay encouraged and be blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Turner. With that, please be reminded that our frequently asked questions will be uploaded on our claytoncountyga.gov website, and please stay updated by visiting our Clayton County website page. Thank you so much.